Welcome everyone. Thank you. I pledge allegiance. Let's go to the roll call.
Here.
Mr. Roland.
Here.
Scotty Brownell.
He's Dreamers.
Here.
And Mr. Tyler.
All good, thank you. And seeing everybody in the audience, I just want to mention, thank you. I like when the crowd keeps growing and growing and growing. Continue to come to our Board of Education meetings. It's the most important thing. Help all engage and collaborate towards going on in our community every single day. So just wanted to note that on the agenda, you'll see correspondence to the Board of Education. If you have sent something and you don't see it there, please check with our district clerk to find out why it may not be there. There are some issues with our server right now and just wanted to make sure that everything is there. And as you know, once we meet, we get to, you know, we can't really discuss anything until we meet. So second thing, I just need approval for the minutes of Board of Education meeting on January 20th as well as the regular meeting on February 1st. Bob first, Dan second, all in favor? All right, motion carries, no abstentions. We're gonna start with some recognition, so Glenn and I are gonna head down. Okay, good evening. So we have some amazing people here tonight that we want to recognize for a variety of different reasons for their outstanding contributions to the educational community here in North Babylon. So I'm gonna start by inviting Arianna Washington and Gabriela Woskowitz. Are they here? Great. Come on down here, come right down by us. And your name? Gabriela, great, stand right here Gabriela. And is Arianna here? No? Okay. So Gabby and Arianna are truly dedicated students and have shown incredible skill in their English Language Arts classes. Arianna displays constant creativity and is incredibly thoughtful and kind. She is a wonderful advocate for social issues who is able to present and articulate ideas clearly. Gabby is thoughtful and funny and expresses her personality through her quirky socks. She is an extremely hard worker who is always willing to support her classmates. She's often found reading and writing during her free time in class. They are both wonderful young learners. The Spine Thrillers 2021 Writing Contest was held by Young Writers America. Each year, this company puts out multiple topics for writing competitions for both the elementary and secondary schools. Though not every entry is accepted for publication, it is part of their goal to help children become passionate and confident writers. Entries that are not chosen are sent back with helpful critiques and an opportunity to revise and re-enter their work. This particular Spine Thrillers Contest was focused on mini saga stories of 100 words or less that include all parts of plot and characteristics of thrillers. Students were encouraged to use their imagination to create an original suspenseful hair-raising mini saga. Gabby and Arianna were both selected as winners and were published in the 2021 anthology. Congratulations to our young authors.
One, two, three. One more? One, two.
Congratulations. So are Justine Boja and Victoria Fowler here? Come on down here, thank you. So I'm very proud to introduce to you two of our high school seniors, Justine Boja and Victoria Fowler, who were named commended students in the 2022 National Merit Scholarship Program. They are among approximately 34,000 commended students throughout the nation being recognized for demonstrating exceptional academic promise. This honor places them among the top 50,000 students who entered the 2022 competition by taking the 2020 preliminary SAT, National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. Their scores have put them in the 96th percentile in the country. This is an amazing accomplishment and the district would like to congratulate Justine and Victoria on this prestigious recognition. Congratulations.
All right, one, two, three. One, two.
Congratulations, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I think I was just told that Arianna is here. Oh, come on up Arianna. So everybody, this is Arianna Washington. So you stand right here Arianna. So I'm gonna repeat this. So Arianna displays constant creativity as an incredible thoughtful and kind person. She's a wonderful advocate for social issues who is able to present and articulate ideas clearly. And you are the winner of the Spine Thrillers 2021 Writing Contest and we're so proud of your work, thank you very much. Congratulations.
One, two, three. And one more? One, two, three.
Congratulations. Do you know, I just want to mention something. I stopped my little blurb on Justine and Victoria too soon. Are they still here? Yeah, come back down because I have to embarrass you a little more first. Because I saw a break in my page and I thought that was it and it's not true. I have more to brag about, about you guys. So come on back. Because this is important for people to know. If I wrote it, it has to be important. So Justine, you're Justine? So Justine has a GPA of 103.534. She's looking to study biochemistry in college with a focus in medicine and pharmaceuticals in order to make medicine more affordable for all. Justine has yet to make a decision on what school she would be attending but has been accepted to Binghamton and Northeastern so far. Anyone else here? Okay. Justine is also the team leader on Kickline, a four-year tennis player, first chair in the marching content and jazz band, as well as the team leader of the academic team. Outstanding accomplishment. So now Victoria is an amazing student as well and she has a 99.176 average. And she has taken 13 honors or AP classes at this point. Victoria is looking to study engineering in college. She has applied to many colleges of which she is waiting to hear back. Victoria has been admitted to Stony Brook University thus far. She has played field hockey throughout high school and has served as varsity captain for the North Babylon High School Quiz Bowl team and is a valued member of our stage crew. Congratulations. Congratulations again. So now I have two high school students who I'd like to recognize for the Suffolk Zone Award. So can Tyler Havanna and Sh- Sineh Sieblies? Cheyenne taking, yes, thank you. Come on down, Cheyenne and Tyler. So let's try to be this way so I can brag about you guys too.
Hold on, I wanna feel like we're at the Olympics. I've been watching it all week long.
Oh, thanks. Don't mess up her hair. So Tyler Havanna is a 97.2 unweighted and a 101.9 student at North Babylon High School. His average in phys ed is 100. The Suffolk Zone Leadership Award is presented by the New York State Association for Health, Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance. This award recognizes outstanding achievement in phys ed, academic excellence, outstanding character, and leadership qualities in physical education class as well as school-wide based activities and a student role model on the high school level. He has played two years of lacrosse, four years of basketball, one year as a captain, four years of football, two years as a captain. He's a part of the National Honor Society, has participated in the Athletic Food Drive, is a part of the Breast Cancer Awareness Run, and does a Crohn and Colitis Walk each year. He has been Football All Division, Football Academic Ball Division, Basketball Academic Ball Division. Congratulations on those accomplishments. So Cheyenne has a 95.9 unweighted and a 100 average weighted in our high school. And of course, she's a 100 student in phys ed. So her athletic accomplishments are four years winter indoor track, all league in 1819, all league on the 4x200 relay in 1920, Most Valuable Player Award in 1920, All League 2021, and the Bulldog Award for 2021. In spring outdoor track, she's been participating for three years. We haven't had it yet, so it'll be four. She's been on the 4x100 relay, which placed fourth place in Suffolk County Section 11 State Qualifier. She's an all-league triple jump in 2019, won first place in the triple jump at the freshman sophomore championships in 2019. She's all-league in the 100-meter dash in 2021, Bulldog Award in 2021, all county in the 4x100 meter relay in 2021, all Long Island in the 4x100 meter relay 2021, 100-meter Section 11 Division 2 champ, and she's a one-year varsity volleyball player. She participates in our equity team, the National Honor Society, the National Science Honor Society, the TriM Music Honor Society, and the National Foreign Language Honor Society. Cheyenne is a member of the 4x200 relay team who recently were named the county championship, county champions, and will be competing at the New York State Championship upcoming. Those are some amazing accomplishments. You want both like that?
I'm sitting in front of you.
You guys can come up. You can come up here to take a picture if you want.
All right. Look here, one, two, three. Okay, one more. One, two, three.
Just one for mom. One, two, three. Sorry Tyler.
Okay, you're good.
Thank you. So now we're gonna recognize one of our administrators. So can Dr. Kim Longberg Point please come on down? So Dr. Longberg Point has been awarded the Educator of Note Award. Founded in 2004, the Long Island Music Hall of Fame is an organization dedicated to the idea that Long Island's musical heritage is an important resource to be celebrated and preserved for future generations. The organization was created as a place of community that inspires and explores Long Island music in all forms. To date, the organization has inducted more than 100 musicians and music industry executives, including not only Dr. Kim, but Billy Joel, Louis Armstrong, Tony Bennett, Run DMC, The Ramones, and now you. Celebrity star.
How do you even know any of the other ones?
Kim started her teaching career in Rockville Center Schools and became the director of art and music programs for North Babylon in 19, you know. It has been her honor to perform as the accompanist for the North Babylon High School Choir at the New York's Carnegie Hall. Her fondest memory was performing in December 2016 with the high school choir at the White House with choir director Christina Bonati. Thrilled with the opportunity, Kim worked tirelessly seeking donations to provide red dresses, tuxedos, transportation meals, and even a White House ornament for each child to always remember their accomplishment. As a lifelong Jets fan.
Yes. My dad worked for them.
Non-judgeable. She was also delighted to step on the 50-yard line of the MetLife Stadium with the North Babylon High School Marching Band in 2018 when they performed the pre-game show.
In the rain.
In the rain. They didn't care.
We won that game.
Yes, and the kids didn't care that it was raining.
No, they didn't.
Right. In the spring of 2008, Kim earned grant funds to bring, do they have to give me such hard words, Pierre Dulain's Ballroom Dance Program to Long Island. Did I say it correctly? All right. Debuting the program in two elementary schools, the debut was written up in the New York Times as a dance curriculum that offers much more than the foxtrot. Kim consistently seeks to bring culturally diverse residency programs to North Babylon's traditionally underserved students such as the African Dance Residency with teachers from the Harlem School of Arts, Dance to Learn and Learn to Dance with Ballet Long Island, and a Steel Pan Orchestra Residency. Dr. Kim served on the founding committee for the Long Island Arts Alliance, Long Island Scholar-Artists Awards from 2007 through 2017, and chairs the Eastern Suffolk Bosse Arts and Education Advisory Board. Kim was president of Suffolk Nice Camp and has hosted many festivals and SCMEA events. During the pandemic, Kim worked to provide home art and music kits for students and hosted drive-by instrument distribution. Rather than canceling concerts, Dr. Kim worked with sound and film engineers to film drive-in movies with small live performances as cars lined up for the show. North Babylon has seen outdoor theater, fresh air sing-alongs, air painting sessions, and because in her, that's because in her mind, the education for the show must go on. Congratulations, Dr. Kim. Thank you, thank you so much. So that's the recognition portion of our Board of Education meeting. So for any student or parent that want to sneak out as we go into our presentation, we'll allow for that time so that we'll set up our technology. You guys can go first in your presentation, okay? So. So it should be good to go, and here is a clicker, and I'll introduce you guys, okay?
Should we use a microphone?
It actually streams directly in from the microphone into our YouTube channel. Alright, so as we move on to the next portion of our meeting, tonight we are going to have our final presentation on our energy performance contract recommendation. And I'm going to turn it over to representatives from ESG who we have been working with to create this energy performance contract and meet the needs of our school district so that we can improve our energy performance here in North Babylon. So I'll turn it over to you.
Excellent. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. My name is Philip Lanza. I'm the Director of Engineering for Energia.
Yeah, you just got told.
Sorry.
That's it.
I'm Director of Engineering for Energia. We're the district's consultant.
Oh, Energia, I'm sorry.
For the energy performance contract. And I'm here tonight with Michael Ryan, Account Executive for Energy Systems Group. And he is the district's energy services contractor. So we're here tonight just to give a quick update on the status of the energy performance contract. So I'd like to talk a little bit about the activity to date. A lot has happened in summer, fall, winter of two thousand twenty-one. We have completed all of our field work for the completion of the comprehensive energy audit of the entire district. As a result of that investigative work, we were able to develop scope, costs, and savings for multiple options. Once we had that information, we worked very closely with the district to prioritize and select the project that provides energy savings and excess savings to address aging and failing infrastructure. So we really tried to tailor this project to the priorities of the district. That brings us to tonight, where we would like to just present to the district, the public, and the board the result of those discussions and present them with the final scope that we've come up with for the energy performance project. Coming up, we'd actually like to come back to the next board meeting in March and present to the board two resolutions. One is a secret determination, which is a standard environmental impact assessment. And the second would be another resolution to actually authorize the energy performance contract to go to the next phase, which is actually going to be the design which will eventually lead into the construction of the energy contract. So in order, Mike Ryan is here with me tonight from Energy Systems Group. I'm going to turn it over to him, and he is going to go over the final scope of the project that we've come up with.
Thank you, Phil. Again, I'm Michael Ryan with Energy Systems Group. And I'm going to go over the details of the project that we've come up with. So we were here a few months ago, and we were still in a kind of a concept phase. We were about eighty, ninety percent there, and since that time, we've really worked hard to come up with the most optimized project. We've worked with Glenn, Frank, and Matt Energia very closely to come up with the most optimized project. And by optimize, what I mean by that is we're looking to replace older infrastructure, you know, equipment throughout the district that is beyond its useful life, no longer reliable. We're looking to enhance the learning environment, such as, you know, lighting. I'll get into the details. Lighting HVAC and, you know, ventilation is a big priority. And we're looking to reduce the energy cost, the utility spend, the cost of utilities greatly. And those savings, those dollars saved from lowering the utility cost is what's used to pay for the project. Our company guarantees those energy savings. So if those savings are not met, our company, Energy Systems Group, makes the district whole. So the optimized project that we came up with, we're going to replace all of the school district's lighting to brand-new, high-efficient LED lighting, bringing them up to today's standards. So that's one of the things that's going to greatly improve the environment of the district. There's great energy savings with that. The next item that's very, very exciting is we're going to put solar in every one of the buildings. So this way, we're going to greatly reduce the electric consumption, what from the utility company, reduce the electric here within the district, from the solar panels across the whole district on all of the roofs. In addition, we're going to, in order to save utility costs, we need to do things like insulation, building envelope improvements, steam trap replacement, and, you know, improve all of the systems within the district. And then finally, throughout, going through the district and assessing the buildings and the different systems, we saw there's a great need for boiler replacement. We found five boiler rooms where the boilers are beyond their useful life. They're no longer reliable, and they're in need of replacement. So a lot of the energy savings from the solar, from the lighting and things like that, that's what's going to be used to replace the boilers within the district. So we can upgrade the boilers of five boiler rooms throughout the district. So to go over how the project is going to be paid for, funded, the cost of the project, all the way to the right is what the project was the last time we presented, which at that time, the project value was eighteen point two million dollars. Since refining the project, we've actually included more measures, more improvements, and we've gotten the cost down to seventeen point one million dollars with guaranteed energy savings of nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. Again, that we are guaranteeing, and that is, as the district realizes those savings and they're validated by Energia, that'll be used to start paying towards the project. In the last, the last time we presented, we looked at using some federal CARES Act money, a million and a half that the district had been awarded. We've found now that we can do the project without that money, allowing the district to benefit using that money elsewhere outside of this project for other needs within the district. And then finally, there'll be two hundred and ten thousand dollars in rebates and grants within the project that we're guaranteeing that the district will get. The timeline, the way we see the project right now, as Phil mentioned, we'll look to go to contract next month, and that'll allow us to roll up our sleeves and really get into preparing for the SED submission, the New York State Education Department submission. We need to submit like you do a capital project for approval. Once we get approval, we would anticipate that approval by February of two thousand twenty-three. Construction would start right after that, March of two thousand twenty-three, and then it would finish in approximately twelve months after that. Once construction is finished, then the energy savings will be measured and validated, and we will be guaranteeing those energy savings for the next eighteen years after construction is finished. And that's it?
I have two quick questions. One is, so being the scope of work on all seven buildings, because you said that all seven buildings would be getting sold. We're working throughout the school year, right? And obviously the summer, which is great. But your work is being done in the buildings while kids are in school? Are you coming in evenings? Are you coming in on weekends?
Yeah, so we would love to take advantage of the summer of us. Outside of that, anything that's, you know, occupied areas and things like that, it's all done nights, weekends, and off-hours and like that. We work around the school schedule.
Okay. And then my only other question was, when we, a few years back, we anticipated looking at solar at one point in time, and we were told that some of our building's roofing was in question and that we wouldn't be able to put solar on those buildings. I don't remember which buildings they were. The building committee might have a better recollection of that, but how we had a point now where it sounds like you guys are willing to put solar on these current roofs. And then my question would be like, what is the obligation to the district? God forbid there's a situation with the roof while those solar panels are on, and the removal of solar panels to fix the roof, where does that responsibility lie at that point in time?
That's a, that's a good question. So we were not involved when it was looked at a while back, but my understanding that was all done with just a visual. So what we did, what we did as part of this study is we did extensive testing throughout the roofs. We did infrared testing to see if there was any water penetration, you know? That would compromise insulation and roofing and things like that. We, we did extensive, extensive studies of the roof. We brought the manufacturer's rep out and we looked at it and determined that there's still light left in these roofs. Now, will the roofs need to be replaced, you know, somewhere in the future down the road, right? Probably not in the very near future, probably not in the very near future, but somewhere down the road they will be. The solar will have to be dealt with. So the way we handle that on these projects is, so ten, fifteen years from now, even twenty years from now, a roof has to be done? So when they do the roofing in the school, they do it this way with or without solar. They do sections at a time. The solar, it actually gets shuffled around on the roof, you know, and then put back as the new roof goes down. Now, there is a cost to that. So, and I felt to mention, I'm sorry, so this, this project, at the end of it all, is thirteen million dollars cash positive. So when you get rebates, energy savings, you pay for the project, you net out thirteen, thirteen, I'm sorry, thirteen million dollars cash positive. So we've actually evaluated.
Is that over the eighteen years?
Over the eighteen years, right? So, but it's quite a bit of money a year that is cash positive right from year one. So we've kind of evaluated and modeled that there will be plenty of money of that excess cash to pay for that cost, you know, not for the roof, but to move the solar out of the way, put it back and things like that. The cost of not doing the solar and waiting till the roofs are done would cost millions and millions of dollars in the loss of not saving that money. Does that make sense?
Fair explanation. So you had, I just want to make one other comment is that when we looked at solar last time, it wasn't through an energy performance contract. It was actually like a company. So their gig was, oh, you can get like solar for free. And then they came in and said, but we're going to charge you five million dollars to fix your roof first because we can't put it on that roof. So I believe there was this kind of company that was coming to say we could get solar, and we were excited about it, but then all of a sudden, there was a cost associated with it where we thought it was going to be similar to this, where it would offset, energy savings would offset solar. So the detail behind these infrared scans, they gave us actual drawings of the infrared, showed us if there was any areas. So, and we would have a plan of taking our excess cash flow and putting it into a capital reserve so that we have money to, when we need to replace a roof, to move the solar or even help offset some of the costs of the roofs.
So during that initial evaluation of the roofs, so you say none of our roofs at this point in time have any leaks or any concerns in certain areas?
We don't have any concerns or anything like that. Are there no leaks anywhere at all, period?
There were, I think, maybe one or two small spots that I recall on those infrared drawings that showed possible small leaks in certain areas.
So we're looking about, maybe fixing those before?
Yeah, so Matt takes those and evaluates those and kind of looks at, you know, have to, they wouldn't put solar over that.
No, we wouldn't.
So the solar is not covered.
So it's not the whole roof getting solar?
Right.
It's not every inch of these roofs, by the way. There's some areas that didn't make sense for different reasons. That's one reason.
Sometimes it's direction, facing. Sometimes it's slope of the roof.
Yep.
So there's different reasons why, but those areas that may have shown, that may need attention, they're not putting solar over. And we'd be able to, and that would be, I mean, we could fix it, and then if we ever have to do it in the future, you can move it to that spot that was fixed then. You know how he was talking about shuffling it? You could shuffle to that area that didn't have it, since it's not all covered, fix the roof in that area, and then move back.
Cool.
Aren't there a different system, like a track system, so they can be moved to the solar?
So the solar system that we're proposing here, and it's what we do in all of the schools on Long Island, it's actually a balanced system. It's weighted, it's weighted down. So it's actually not even penetrating the roof or drilled through or anything like that. It's weighted down. It's rated for the hurricanes that we get here and everything like that, you know?
Yeah, so I'll just go in my experience, my personal experience, because I do that solar at home, and I, so I just ask you those questions.
And, you know, the only thing that I should mention is, you know, we've walked all of the roofs with the manufacturer of the roof, you know, who provides the warranty that these roofs are stolen, the warranty actually. But then he comes just before we start the work and does a total inspection of the roof. And then he comes afterward to make sure that we haven't done anything that would void a warranty or anything like that, you know? And we do have to build to his standards and their standards, and they do have standards, like underneath the, it's called wrapping that the solar goes on. They make us put these special sheets down and things like that.
Any other board members have any questions? Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
One more jet. One more presentation.
Yeah, no, you're good.
With no more?
No, one more presentation. Okay, I'd like to invite Kathy Dean, who is the President of the NBTO.
Should we just, so we can leave? Do we just want to ask the public if they have any questions of these gentlemen?
Sure, we could do that.
Anyone have any questions?
Of course I do.
Go ahead.
Okay, so you're going to pay for it with the savings, but it's going to take eighteen years with the savings to equal what it costs. Where does the money come from?
No, so the savings you make each year pay for the project, and then actually, we're cash positive. We pay for the whole project, and over eighteen years, we're actually thirteen million in the plus.
How do we pay for the project?
With the savings of what we have in our energy. So we budget for the same energy costs, right? We then use this energy performance contract. All of our energy costs decrease X amount as planned out by an amateurized schedule. And then that money gets paid to them for the work.
And the district doesn't make the first payment until a year after construction is done and the savings is validated. Then they make their first payment.
So you're paying for the project?
You guys pay out the money?
They pay for the project.
We have it financed. So there's a finance company that's laying out the money.
Oh, okay. You have to set that.
Yeah, I think maybe two meetings ago when we first started, we did that way. You got it?
Now it makes sense.
Yeah. And then if we're short, that's what he was talking about. So if, say one year, we don't particularly save the amount of money that we were projected to save, they guarantee us that savings so that we never have a budgetary issue.
We literally cut a check. So we're guaranteeing nine hundred fifty thousand a year. If it's eight hundred fifty thousand a year, we cut a check for that hundred thousand dollars.
Well, you're going to think this is a stupid question, but how do you make money?
How do we make money?
Because it's built into the cost of the, it's built into the cost of the project. So, so that when they're building this project and they say it costs eighteen million dollars to do, there is profit margin built into that project. Yeah.
So they get a profit margin, and we get profit.
Correct. And we just try to take more of their profit margin to us. That's why we kind of rake them over a few times and make them come here three times.
Yeah, these three guys are rough when it comes to that.
So in year nineteen, that savings is completely ours?
Yes.
Yeah.
After that, you're done paying us, you're done paying for the project, and it's all yours.
Yep. You got it, you got it. Excellent. Thanks. You guys, if you guys, anybody else? Oh, here we go. Hi.
So now does the eighteen years start from when we sign the contract or does it start from the end of the construction?
End of construction.
Okay, so that's when the eighteen year, so.
Two thousand twenty-four.
But wait, we have to, for some reason, construction is something happening, construction is here.
It starts the, the year that it, the construction's done.
That's correct.
Okay. Are the air tints in all the buildings still part of the plan or is that a bad?
That's not a part of this plan. We have an HVAC plan as a part of our federal funds. And then also moving, that would be for the high school.
It was part of?
It was. We removed it because we needed boilers. Because boilers are making sure that we have DDC controls in our bond and operating boilers. So we swapped out projects because some of the federal funds that we were applying here, that one point five million originally, was not an acceptable cost when they reinvented those federal funds, and we had to recalibrate all of our expenditures. So just the HVAC system is out and boilers are in?
And we added a few other things. We added control of exhaust fans. We added some pipe insulation. We added some more scope in. So we're taking control of all of the exhaust fans in the district. That wasn't in before. Again, we were at like an eighty percent design at that point, so we put all exhaust fans in, more pipe insulation. I think that was.
Yeah, I think those were the major ones.
And then the five boiler rooms, right?
Yeah, the five boiler rooms.
Which is the big thing, yeah.
Now, I only asked about the, when it started, because I know we had issues with the PNCs and not getting here. And I was just like, I just started, and it's not that, as of construction or design.
Right, exactly. Did you guys have a question over there? Did you guys have a question over there? No? Okay. Anybody else? Genie? Of course.
So, in the budget of the plan, the univents and the air conditioners, that's how this is-
So the univents are in the bond and actually already we're doing bidding on the univents. I think it's an added-
Yeah, we had to say that.
Attendance for tonight. So the univents have the capability of putting coils in. Or we're also looking at, as an interim plan, moving the window ACs from the high school that would have an HVAC system and trying to get air conditioning in each room either via window or the univent project.
And then the main tracks as well as, that's how-
So that's going to be discussed tonight. You can hear that answer tonight. All right, so anybody else? Okay, great. So I'm going to reintroduce Kathy Dean, our president of the NBTO. Thank you very much, guys. She's going to present to the board on her student-centered advocacy grant that the board asked her to come to present on tonight.
Thank you. All right. Well, thank you for having me. Mr. Paraleo spoke at a couple of board meetings ago now, I guess, wanted to bring back up the student-centered advocacy grant. Pretty much, I mean, throughout the last couple of years, I know it's been a priority of most of the people sitting on the board to talk about how the, the impact of the New York State Regents exams have on a kid's grade point average. So, back in 2018, we had written a grant and we had won. It was a national grant to study the impact that the weighting of a Regents has on a student's grade point average. So this was well before COVID. We had a number of civic associations, parents, PTAs. We had a poll, we did extensive research on this. We invited some colleges in, a lot of different people. And on our conference day, we also talked to the teachers. We had town hall kind of informational settings and really talk about the Regents. So if you don't have a high school student, you may not know that the Regents each year, if they have it, so for example, last year they didn't, it weighs in when calculating a student's grade point average. And we all know when students are applying for college, grade point average is kind of a big deal. Whether a kid gets into college and more importantly almost is what kind of money is available for these kids when they get into college. So we want to try to make sure that kids from North Babylon have the best advantage possible and we want them to get the most money possible. So that was the impetus for studying this. And again, this was even pre-COVID. So now that we're in COVID, it's even more of a priority and something that I've been passionate about for a number of years. And like I said, a number of members on your board have also been passionate about. So when our unit was negotiating our contract, we felt so strongly about this that we actually included an article in our contract to advocate for kids because that's how strongly we felt about it. We got that in there and basically what that does is it allow us to talk about it every year and look at the situation and see what would be the most effective and how would it help kids the most. So, just to go back a little bit, what do colleges know? When a college sees a kid apply, they send their transcript. They have no idea how the school came up with the grade point average. So some districts may average in the Regents heavily. Maybe it's worth 20%, maybe it's worth 30%, whatever it is. But colleges don't know that. There's no little asterisks at the bottom, there's no key that explains that. They're just looking at the numbers. So a student from North Babylon applying for a college that has a, you know, a 95 average, they don't know how that was calculated. So if you have a student from another school district where a Regents grade might be calculated in more or less, it could potentially set those kids apart and maybe disadvantage certain kids. So that is kind of what we were talking about. So when we sat down with an admissions person from SUNY Farmingdale, they said, no, we have no idea. We're just looking at the numbers. We're assigning scholarships and acceptances based on the numbers. We have no idea how you get those numbers. We really don't care. That's kind of up to you. So that, that was, that really hit home, like, wow, okay, we need to be the ones advocating for the kids then. If the colleges have no idea, we want to make sure our kids are getting the most that they possibly can. So now fast forward to the pandemic. We know that there have been a tremendous amount of absences. It was, you know, kids were quarantined sick, faculty staff were quarantined sick. So this by far is not a typical year. I think when we all met the end of last year, everybody had hot hopes for this year being more quote unquote "normal." And then we really got hit, all schools did, in the winter month, early winter months, and there were a lot of absences. So imagine being a student trying to be prepared for a Regents. Regents is a full, you know, based on a full year of instruction. Imagine a child is quarantined three times, back when they were being quarantined maybe 10 days at a time. A kid missing a month of instruction. That's not even including a teacher who may have been out. So you're talking about weeks of instruction that maybe kids aren't getting for no fault of their own or the teachers or anybody, just a tough time. But potentially, if the state decides that there are going to be Regents exams at the end of June, they're based on an entire year's worth of instruction. And our kids may or may not have had that. Whether they received, you know, some home instruction at the time, it's still, it's not the same. We all know that being in school is where the kids learn the most. So, one of the things we talk about is possibly adopting what's called a do no harm policy. And we'll get into that a little bit. Just to give you an idea, Mr. Ashbach shared with me the attendance, just to really visualize how much, mostly, I would say, COVID impacted students' attendance. Increases, over 100% increase, 140% increase, a 200% increase in absences in students. And again, you're not here, you're not receiving the same level of instruction. And again, no fault of their own. It really, those numbers just speak volumes about what it was like in the schools for really, I mean, September was not so bad, but then you could see the progression. And hopefully, we're on an upward swing and we're headed in the right direction. But those numbers bear strong, you know, reference for this whole study. So our recommendation, we've been talking to teachers, parents, we've been advocating for kids, again, for years. It's just even highlighted more now that we're dealing with COVID, is to say, we would like to see a whole harmless practice. Basically, what would happen is a student, if there was a Regents exam, they would take the Regents. If the Regents grade improved their grade point average, we would factor it in at the percentage that it would count. If it was going to harm the child, that Regents grade stays to the side and you just factor in their quarter averages. This is done in a lot of different schools. It's done where, my son goes to school. So again, if you had two kids, same exact grade point average, they both sit for the Regents. Now maybe those kids, again, missed 30 days of school, 40 days of school. So they're not really prepared to take that Regents. They bomb the Regents. They pass it, but they get a 68. But meanwhile, this is a 90-plus student. That's going to bring down their grade point average and it's going to put the student here at a disadvantage compared to maybe a student in another district. And we don't want to see that happen. We don't want to take away from the students who maybe are exceptional test takers in general or didn't miss a lot of school and it could help them. Because of course, listen, if it brings up your grade point average, why not? But we also don't want to see kids hurt. So our recommendation would be a whole harmless. If the grade point average goes up because of the Regents, we count it. If it doesn't, we put it aside because the colleges don't know how you get those grade point averages. And our whole idea is to advocate for kids and I believe the, the board feels similarly, making sure that our kids have the best advantage possible. We have a committee called the Central Advisory Committee and they're kind of like our academic oversight. There are administrators on there, teachers on, central office sits on there. So our next step would be to present this to them and go over the reasons why we're recommending this. And then it would go back to the board and hopefully, we would like to see that go forward. But that's where we came from. Again, we were studying it way before COVID. It just seems to even make more sense now, more than ever. We want the North Babylon kids to get as much money, get the best acceptance as possible. And that's it. Do we, anyone have any questions about that?
Just the board first. I want to actually make a comment. So, thank you Kathy. I personally want to say thank you because in 2017, I was a strong proponent on this board to speak of this issue prior to the pandemic and the fact that our school had a 25% Regents weighted on some classes. Again, I don't know if it was all classes. And I was concerned about that, again, not personally, but for all the kids in the school, but it did affect me personally. We brought that up at that time and we had a pretty extensive conversation. And there was some dialogue back and forth with the ideology of the district and some of the staff that it was very important to weigh these tests because if they knew the tests weren't weighed or not going to be counted, that students would treat it differently, right? So I personally remember, and a couple of board members did as well at that time, agree with the ideology. And we, I think, wanted to put this type thing in place, but we were told a recommendation from the high school as far as the staff as well. I don't know if it ever went to the COC or not, I'm not really sure. But we did successfully change it from 25%. I think the max is now 10% if I'm correct. I don't know if that's a max or not.
I think it's around 11 or something.
It's 11, yeah.
Do you not have, like for this year, there wasn't a midterm? Okay.
So it went up a little.
Or 11 and a half?
Okay. So I just want, again, I want to say that thank you, but we've, we've been, I personally feel like we've been battling this for a while and I do agree with the pandemic has made some additions, but some of our kids way back when were also affected and did not receive funding as opposed to some of our other competition across the island. And it was always a concern for our North Babylon students, at least for me and some of the board members back then. So I want to say thank you for moving forward this and I can't wait to hear the new recommendations from the current staff and administration at the high school and as well as the-
Yeah, so what Kathy says here in this slide, the recommendations in the CAC report card and report card committee. In the contract that was just approved, it's a collaborative meeting of that group. It did meet in June and did not accept a change in the weighting, but Kathy's recommendation is to pull that group back together. Again, because when they met, it was almost unanimous that they didn't want to change the weighting. But maybe this information and really having that committee reconvene may change the mind based on the presentation Kathy has here.
Okay, perfect.
Other questions? You have?
Yeah.
Good enough?
Hi, Mr. Myers, how are you?
All right. I'm glad to hear this. I, I think that something that might help the conversation is that you might want to look at, if you haven't done so already, look at local districts on Long Island. I really don't know many districts that are above 10%. You know, a lot of districts are 5%. So I think that, you know, 25% at one time is definitely something that is really high. I would also-
It wouldn't be 25, the most it would be 11.
Yeah.
And in the past, it was 20.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Before that year, it was 20 and reduced that year Matt's talking about.
Okay.
I think to like 12 or something at that point.
Okay.
Not being specific.
And then down again, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I think that with, and you saw already, you might also want to look at the weighting of the courses because there are districts that vary between 1.05 or advanced force to 1.15. Where I work in the, for some of the advanced classes as well. And that's something that might also put someone at a disadvantage when they are going for their applications. I think, I don't know if the, the advanced Regents with distinction is something that is happening a great deal in this district, but that might be something that a lot of those kids probably will strive for anyway. So I don't think that that really is an argument to deter going down. And the last thing that I always tell people is that the Regents exam is a state assessment. It really wasn't designed to be part of your overall average. And that's why about six years ago, I think, when they were going to do a one through five with scoring and you could see it, you still see it, something like 95 and 5 and so forth. And that, they could go that route any day anyway, so what would you calculate anyway? So it's only talked about creating like an authentic assessment and type of badge of authority grade and just leave the Regents exam as a state assessment.
I don't think at this point, and the end of February, I don't think that that's something we talked about for this year. Because again, like Mr. Ashbach said, the end of last year, I think we all thought, hey, this is going to be a normal school year, we're going to be back. We didn't even think we needed to go beyond that. So I think a lot of the things you bring up are, are great things to be, you know, keeping in the back of our mind and thinking about going forward. I think for right now, we're just trying to minimize the potential negative impact from kids, get them the most money, the most acceptance as possible in the event that the state does go through and give the Regents. You know, we want our kids getting, getting all that money.
What's your timeline?
So, I believe I was able to get it and Mr. Jones can let me know, is it going to be, I think, on the next CAC agenda, I believe, right? Because it got postponed, right, Dean, it got postponed?
The meeting that postponed, when we were waiting for this to happen tonight to see the consensus of your presentation.
Yeah.
Jen, I'm sure you and I co-chair that meeting together. Jen representing the union, you representing the district. And so we, it was the recommendation on our next meeting to put on the agenda.
So it should be early, late February, early March, right?
Yeah, after break, so March is-
Right after the break.
So it's possible for our market, our business meeting to-
So when I said that the process goes not only to the CAC, but as Kathy says, there's a report card committee. It breaks into elementary and secondary. And the way in which the contract is written is that the recommendation goes from the secondary report card committee to the CAC. So CAC, I believe what we're going to do, recommend that the secondary report card committee reconvene to discuss this topic and make a recommendation back to the CAC to review. And then based on the vote of CAC, I inform you at every board update when we have a meeting, the minutes and what happens. So you'll see when that goes on so you can discuss it again. And obviously Kathy, Glenn and I will be speaking in the meantime.
My, my actual recommendation would be to combine those, those teams.
Okay.
Let's like speed it up. Let's have the report card committee meet with the CAC. Let's get this, you know, share the presentation with the data and to try to move it along. So yeah, that we could potentially get it to the more-
So maybe Kathy and you and I can discuss facilitating that meeting together?
Yes.
So we can make sure all the information is, is accurate and on point to make some solid recommendations that we know are, you know, that along.
Okay.
Mr. Shaya, would you?
Yeah, hi Kathy.
Hi.
It's great material, I think, you know, and I guess, a couple of things. One, you know, I mean, Regents have been a problem since, you know, I went to school here and we used chisel and stone to, to do the answers. But what's the resistance from some of the staff?
So prior, prior would have been just that they were concerned maybe kids wouldn't put their best effort forward if they knew that it didn't count. But again, the Regents grade goes on the report card regardless. So that alone is insensitive. You don't want to get a 12 and have that on your report card, whether it's going to factor into your average or not. It typically-
Well, it's true too, right?
Yeah, so-
So I have to say what adds to it? And this would be great for the legislative committee because there is current legislature, legislation up there. It's APPR because teacher scores are tied to Regents proficiency. So if kids aren't, if we're not having a certain percentage of our kids scoring proficient on these Regents exams, teacher's scores could drop. So the idea is, and I know the legislation's there because they've been looking at getting rid of Regents and it's there now saying, and you need to decouple this finally so that we can get away from the standardized testing. That could be beneficial for our learning experience, being tainted because it's counting as a teacher score. Keep rubrics, keep whatever rubric you want to use to observe and evaluate, but decouple these standardized tests so they can go back to being informative for our programs and our students and not impact teachers or students. And it's highlighted by the pandemic. We didn't fall apart when we didn't have Regents last year.
And we didn't fall, and the teachers didn't fall-
And kids went to college and they're being college and they're being successful. The idea is that I think some of the teachers are concerned that their score for their evaluation is five Regents scores averaged. And then they're afraid that if it doesn't count in the grade, that the kid's not going to try. So there's really no historical research on that ideology that grades are, failing grades don't motivate kids to have higher grades. So an F does not motivate the kid to get an S. Kids will get motivated by grades or the kids who are worried about the 94 versus the 97, not the 50 trying to get to 66. So there are different strategies to motivate kids to perform better on assessment and feel better prepared. So I've been saying that, you know, for years since I've been here, that, you know, grades aren't motivating to kids who don't do well.
And, and we don't know for sure where we're going to land with the Regents anyway. Last year, parents had the ability to opt the children out of Regents exam. I, we don't know yet, you know, what that's going to be, but we would like to at least have a plan potentially in place where we do the best by our kids.
Oh, and the fact that they put questions on there that we never got a chance to teach the kids.
Not to mention, I mean, in years past, you've seen the front page of Newsday, although I despise the newspaper, but you see, oh, we had to go back because we realized six questions had either two right answers or no right answer. So the tests are inherently flawed anyway. So now you're basing it on flawed tests, you're basing it on kids who aren't in school, teachers who aren't in school, the, the additional stress of just everything of that learning during the pandemic and you're expecting kids to rise to the same level that maybe they would have, you know, in 2018 or 2019. It's just not the same. It's just not the same, and we want to give our kids that advantage.
Thank you.
So that's what we're advocating for.
Any other, any other questions from the board members?
Mr. Carroll, any questions? You're good? Okay.
Here's a question.
Well, we'll actually, during the right time, right? I just want to let them guys leave, is that okay? Unless you had that direct question for Kathy.
I think it is a question.
Well, it's a question about this whole thing. So if it's a student by student thing, you have to manually go in and change a transcript? Because you send a transcript to a college.
So the grades are on the transcript anyway. It would be whether it's calculated into this average or score.
But it's a student by student case.
Yes.
So you manually have to go and adjust?
I would have to speak to districts who already do it to figure out how they do that. There's probably reports that you can run that compare a four quarter average versus adding that in and do a comparison report where only those come out that have a higher average with the five scores in versus the four. So there has to be some way, because there's no way that districts, you know, large districts with 4,000 kids in their high school doing one by one. So...
I would think that they have...
But you still have to look at every student to see how it affected them, right?
Well, you can run reports that would probably filter that down.
There's a lot of schools that do it already, so yeah, we would just...
Yeah, each school has the ability to...
Each school will want out of the review.
Right.
Mr. Dan Rose, he knows. Okay, sure.
Any question? In the event that this does change, let's just say in the next two or three years, what happens to like, say that the kids who are in ninth grade now and then they'll be in 11th grade? Is there any way to, that we're going to be able to correct this so that they're all on the same, you know?
So at least this, we have as each year we revisit it. So based on whatever happens, I mean, anything can happen with the state regions, anything could happen with, you know, with construction, whatever the board feels as they want to set the policy for, you have the ability, and that's actually a good thing to revisit it every year, because there might be certain reasons why you want, might want it to be more or less in any given year.
And just, I think she's more asking, we would not go back and change transcripts. It would be from that point forward, because you would, may not have teachers here who taught that course or gave that grade, and you wouldn't go into their grade book and change it. Once it's, once that's the standard, that's set for the standard, only if you're reducing the standard. Like, we wouldn't be here right now saying, well, we told everybody they don't count, but now they're going to count 20% because that you can't prepare for. But if you're reducing the standard where we're saying only if it improves your grade, you can make that adjustment for this year, but you really can't go back. Now, we are fortunate, because if this is something, last year, the regions exams were optional. So right now, your 10th graders, really the last group that took the regions is...
Because juniors last year were optional and ninth grade were... So in ninth grade, we closed them all, and 10th grade was optional, unless you were advanced. And now in 11th grade now, unless you're advanced, we took them out. So the last group that took the regions right now is really in 12th grade. And that was an advanced kid, and that would be in 11th grade now.
And what's nice is it's potentially, it affects kids, even though it's a one year, like now it'd be a one year thing, it affects kids all the way through. If you're a ninth grader, if that doesn't hurt you, you know, if it helps your grade point average, that's your grade point average all the way through, that's going to help. So it's a one year thing, but it potentially impacts the kids all four years.
So it depends if the state is changing, if we're opting out and have to take it.
Yeah.
If the kids that are 10th grade have never taken a point out, that's...
So no, that's doing, it's not a region, it's a checkpoint exam, but no, they really have to take it.
They have to have taken it, and they're going to start off with a 10th grade region, right?
That could happen.
Yeah.
If the state mandates it.
All the more reason why you don't want penalized them and have a very high percentage, you know, if it's going to potentially hurt a kid who hasn't done that before.
Stop.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you. Just asking that question out so everyone can...
I thought we sent an email or a letter supporting it as a community member.
Well, I guess Kathy Dean has her own email address.
Yes, yes. Absolutely. Yes, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Okay. So we're up to security vestibule update. So we've been having conversations at our board meetings regarding where we are with the security vestibules and our technology project and the smart schools project. So we had a meeting and we are realigning our thinking regarding how we want to go about the security vestibules for our security booths. So in this handout here to the board, you'll see, and that's not the actual picture of the vestibule, that's the size that would be required, but the building committee met to discuss doing security booths outside of each of the schools, where a security guard would be in the booth, and you have where they would be located in each of the buildings. And the security guard in there would then have the access to the building. So there would be, the visitor management system would be in the booth, a visitor would have to go up to the booth, scan their ID. That person in the booth would have the ability to buzz and enter comment and say they're letting somebody in, and they would let the visitor in from the outside. When you look at this, the cost of this project to do eight booths, which is one at every school, two at the high school, okay, is $637,500, inclusive of the design, putting them in, purchasing them, and getting them all wired and ready to go. Now, we also spoke about decoupling this from our smart schools bond. Mr. Rose has done a good job working on completing our smart schools project for our technology portion, which includes all of our camera systems, upgrade to our switches and servers, as well as our visitor management system. In this, you'll see, you'll see $970,000 for all of that, but really it's a million seventy because we wanted to show we have Cisco switches. And the, the recommendation, the estimate does not include Cisco switches, it's cheaper switches, so Cisco switches. So the recommendation would be to use Cisco switches, because that's what we have in our district, and that's what more reliably come with a better warranty and ability to be fixed. So my recommendation is, from the building committee, and Bob, you can speak to this, we had a discussion about submitting the technology portion of smart schools, which we have about $1,080,000, and do the technology portion, and then do the security vestibule booths through the capital reserve with a vote for May on those, because they do fit into the language that we currently have in that reserve. We have about $2.1 million in that reserve for projects. So this would be about $640,000, and it would have to be voted on by the community in order to do that.
So you remember last month's meeting, you talked about we might have to take the cameras out away from the booths, and that's one, because of the pricing and stuff. And then this way, we can start on the cameras like now and get that started on the security side. The booths, you say, you know, and where they are located, you know, being outside, it cuts the cost way down on that. And at the last meeting, I think, to talk, do we have, Glenn, do we have the possibility of doing the booths at some of the buildings and then the ones that have the, like, all this pricing at Moses and High School to do it in the vestibule?
Yeah, so I don't have exact details, but the overall cost of doing the vestibules to make with the mantraps was 3.2 million.
At every building.
And I think that when we had our conversation, we were concerned about the optics of equity and safety, that if we were going to provide one type of entrance at a school, we would want to provide an identical entrance at the other school, so that there wasn't a perception that, you know, this school got these type of security measures and the other school got vestibules.
So this is, this is obviously going to cost us eight additional security guards to man these items, right, as well?
Yeah.
Is there a cost involved? Obviously a cost involved.
Yeah.
Have we...
A staffing cost.
Do we know what that would be like? How, how, how many hours would this be manned?
So it would be manned during school hours, because it would be for entrance and exits of the school building. So it would be the same amount of hours that we currently have our guards working in the buildings. And so, yeah, there would be definitely a staff cost to that.
Now, do staff members check in here as well, or staff members still continue to check in at the building?
So they would, as we move through this visitor management system and this, this access control, teachers would have their badges that would buzz them into doors that were labeled for them to go into. And the booths would be for visitors who were non-employees or professional developers or parents coming to pick up children for, out of the nurse's office, and staff will be able to buzz in doors that are designated for staff at each building.
And those systems are like the ones when you go to a hospital, you hand your license, they put it in, they print a little badge for you so you can...
Has your picture on it, has your name on it, and they track who's in, who's out, how many hours, all that.
Or can you track, you don't want that person in the building for some reason, or it comes up, or...
Yeah, it comes up, they'll say, no, not allowed in.
Or, anything works within it.
Yeah, so one of the popular programs called scholarship, I don't think we made a decision on what art system would be, but that's a product that's commonly used in many school districts, very similar to the hospital system where you printed the sticker badge, and when you pull the ID out, it comes up.
Yeah, just to clarify, it's not going to track anybody leaving, right? It'll track anybody entered the building and when they entered, but if they leave, they're not going to...
Unless we said to people, we had a protocol, that was upon exit, you return to the booth to turn in your sticky badge on your way out, and then the security guard will...
There's no badges that disappeared during the day, you know, two hours, they disappeared.
Yeah, some of those badges that print out for the visitor will actually disappear.
I would just be concerned again, if there's an emergency, right? We're supposed to be able to allow, right, security and fire, how many people, who's in our building, right? So I'm just looking at for that purpose. You know, and obviously, if someone's in our building for an extended period of time and they're, you know, we know their meeting's over and they haven't checked out, where could it possibly be? That's only a...
I have a question. Sorry.
Go ahead.
I have a question about the booths itself. What are the dimensions that we have to...
So they have to be, I'm going to get this wrong, six by eight.
Six by eight.
Six by eight, because they have to be ADA accessible. Yep. So they have to be six by eight.
But people from outside are not going to be coming into these booths, right?
No, no.
So that's like in the event we have a...
By law, the state won't pass...
The building.
The building, won't pass the plans without them being ADA.
Okay. And then the location of the placement?
Yep.
What?
They have to be 10 feet from the building, and they cannot block any operational windows or egresses that may be used for fire exits. So the one building that we have an issue with is the middle school. That's why you see it in the little grass island that's in between the parking lot and the loop, because there is no space that's, that isn't 10 feet, and the window wouldn't hit. So you have to put it in the little island by the parking lot and the loop on the middle school.
I see that the picture of the one that you gave us is all windows. Did you take into consideration the view that the...
Oh, that's not a picture, that's not like what we're buying. That was me saying, hey, security booths, kind of like a model, like we would design exactly, you know, what we would purchase, and I would show it to the board beforehand.
This is my question, just from a security standpoint. Will it be completely secret? Will we be able to see out, well, I'm sorry, not we, will the security be able to see out at all times so they can see the different locations of the building as opposed to a wall on one side?
No, the old windows, you have laws on the outside of your building now also.
Right.
Wait, you have what?
If someone's seeing the outside of the building also, glass around the wall.
That's my question, because we talked about cameras and viewing points, is anything going to be blocked?
So those, those, those booths would be windowed, so that somebody would be in there, and we would have to look at how our cameras are focused or where they're pointing and adjust them to when we put these in.
Would we still have a security guard at the entrances of the door?
You have to have somebody inside as well, so a security guard there and a security guard inside. Any other questions?
So two are assigned. You said one inside and one outside?
Yes, at each door.
At each door of the building?
At each door of the entrances.
Well, you have now, you have the door monitor and the security person.
Yeah.
So that probably be two security.
The monitoring there is almost, it'd be nice if you had it on the Robert Moses, I don't know if it'll work in other schools, but, you know, after arrival...
Yeah, because that's a good flag lot, so you have the ability to kind of do an access control there. A lot of the other buildings have multiple access points, so it might be something applicable here. All right? So the question is, are you comfortable with us submitting the $1,070,000 technology plan for the smart schools bond and get that up there now to the state? And then putting out a referendum for a vote for the security vestibules using the capital reserve, which would be at no cost to the taxpayer, because the money's already in the reserve? And then we would promote the security vestibules like we would a bond. So there would be meetings, and we'd have three dimensional models of it, or do all that work before the vote, okay? And it would be at our budget vote time, it would be another resolution.
So my only question would be, since we are decoupling it, and if it doesn't pass the vote, as the vote would be the...
So if it doesn't pass, then you would have to look for general fund expenditures, pay it out of the general fund budget instead of a reserve.
But it's not going to change the decoupling.
No. So what it changes is if, if it doesn't pass the vote using the capital reserve, the following year, if you wanted to, you could look to budget $640,000 to do it in your budget vote. All right? So... Teresa, you're live, do you want to take the phone?
Uh, thank you.
You're welcome. Is everyone good with that?
Yeah.
Okay, great. You all good? Good that side?
Good.
Yep.
Okay, moving on to the next topic, which is having an update on our, our action plan, our immediate and visible action plan regarding the middle school and high school. This is just an extra copy, so that you can add that. Can I ask Dr. Klop and Mr. Rigor to come on down? I wanted to sit on my... So we've been doing a lot of work with this immediate plan. We informed you of the strategies that we were going to use to try to make an immediate impact on our school climate and culture through this immediate plan at our last meeting. So what I want to do is just go through each of these areas and let you know how we're doing. So first, I want to say that we've had one physical incident in each building since our last meeting. Okay? So that's a significant improvement, it's showing that our additional supervision is really impacting. So the first strategy we talked about was formalized hallway presence and putting deans and administrators and teachers in the dog way and guidance counselors and everyone having a post in there. And we were going to provide evidence that we did that by collecting data. So I'm going to ask them just to share the data that you guys collected when doing that.
Sure. At the high school, the deans, the school counselors have been consistently at their post over 93% of the time. We've also collected data on teachers in the hallway. Again, that's over, that's over just around 93%. And again, that one's a little bit harder, because it's, they're not assigned and they move classes and such. So teachers have been really hyper vigilant, hyper present, same thing with the deans and the counselors.
So I just want to say that if somebody wasn't there, it's not for any other reason that possibly they moved classrooms to another room to teach, or they had to use the restroom, or they got called down to the office to pick something up. So there is nothing behind these percentages, other than 93% of the time, there is a more visible presence in our hallway during the change of classes, which are really good data.
Or very specific duties. So if you leave to do a lunch duty or a supervision of the classroom, you can't really do it, you're late to where you go.
And your data point was-
Our data point is essentially about 94% for all of our teachers, our PPS staff, the deans, everybody. Extra build, very much so aware of what we were looking to accomplish. And it's very clear we walked through the building, everybody's done the whole one.
Do we have a data point that compares to prior to?
No, because we never collected data on this.
Just wondering.
So, yeah, we've never collected data on this. Plus, we've never had this formalized of an approach, okay? The second strategy was a more visible security presence in our building. We had two security guards in each building during the day shift as much as we possibly could. They are still there. We're maintaining them as we speak now and they've been here, they've been working, and it has improved. And we actually have recommendations in our short-term plan, which I'm going to give to you next. Faculty meetings to review behavioral expectations of students and hallway supervision. So do you want to just talk about when you did that? I'm going to grab some information for that.
I think that was February 8th, the second Tuesday of the month.
Both high school and middle school faculty meetings.
We reviewed, we articulated expectations, communicated to teachers what we're trying to do, emphasized SEL, you know, socio-emotional learning, check-ins with kids. We talked about straddling the saddle in the hallways, which teachers have stepped up none. We talked about the fact that what was presented at the last board meeting for the idea that there would be a short-term plan to take us through the end of the year and a long-term plan for next year's work.
In addition to that, we also spoke about what it means to be a citizen in our, in our building, what every classroom should look like and feel like for a goal for the staff member and the teacher. So there's a lot of input from our, from our staff going that expectation sheet out.
Great, and then the next strategy was actually to articulate this to the students. So I'm handing out to the board what you guys did in your building. So can you just describe it a little bit?
Sure, very much the one.
Yep.
Your name too.
You go.
I'm going to. Well, thank you. So we, we really have a point of emphasis going through this. The one we use in the middle school was one we developed collaboratively about three years ago. So it was already in place and in line pre-COVID. So we had asked our math and our science teachers suspended day each Mondays and Monday and Tuesday, reviewing this, going over it, spending time with the students, talking about what the expectations are, getting some feedback from the students. And after that meeting, on the Wednesday, myself and Ms. Sandras did a virtual meeting with each grade level to once again review the three big takeaways, which were our respect, responsibility, and relationships, which is the cornerstone of the project.
Very similar to what we did. We had our, we had our teachers in social studies classes share, share our presentation, which we wrote. Colleen, Jeff and I wrote, we gave scripts. We are following that up with, do you care if I talk about the deans follow-up now?
No, that's in the next plan, so no.
Yep. You upside, so you do that one?
Sticking. So now, so following that articulation with our staff, creating those presentations and then it being distributed to students, we did some check-ins with kids, right? So we asked kids about, hey, did you review some behavior expectations in your class? Administrators were doing that throughout the building following. And there was very good feedback that all kids could identify that that was done in class, that they recognized what the reasons were behind that. The last strategy we had in our immediate action plan was these presentations. So you can speak about your presentation.
So I did a five-to-ten minute introduction to the students. We, we worked with Joe Barline, myself, Ms. Lilgavina, Ms. Legandi, Mr. Raymond. We worked with Officer Genio Seis to create a presentation, which we did in eight periods a day in our physical education classes called Good Decisions and Avoiding Terrible Consequences. I did the introduction piece. Officer Seis went through some of the legality, some of the penal law, and that was really effective. Our physical education teachers followed up with a homework assignment. And we got, we've been getting those assignments back from our physical educators and looking at takeaways, for example, that kids walk away from that with.
Genia's been great, she's been here with us. She does multiple presentations for our grade levels as well. And they're very specific to our middle school students. Boundaries, social media, things of that nature. And she'll be coming back again to work with smaller groups of students to really target behaviors, expectations, and again, to make the best decisions possible.
So do you guys have any questions about the immediate action plan and what we're reporting back to, what we did and the influence that we already see on our school climate and culture?
Can I make a comment?
Yeah.
I would, hello? I would just like to applaud everyone for all the work that they've done and I'm glad that you found success. And also, I know you didn't mention the PS I Love You Day. I saw some of that on Facebook. And I know some board members and central administrators attended the Saturday event. And I think that a lot of events like that, as well as the teaching of expectations, really helps the kids out, so I applaud you for that.
Great.
Yeah, I think you've done a great job on this, right? Mrs. Sand?
Yes.
I know last meeting I was a little harsh on both you guys. And Dr. Klaup, you know me for a long time. You're my favorite high school principal. You're really my favorite junior high school principal. I shoot to the point, emotions were high. Dr. Community and myself also, but I'm glad to see that we're moving along with this. I do like you guys and you do do a good job, so I just want to get that across.
Thanks.
Are you ready for me? I, I, I do commend you guys for what you've done and I appreciate everything that you've done in, you know, after the last meeting because obviously I was very hopeful about my displeasure at the time. And I want to just point out, I don't want there to be any misunderstanding about what I meant from the last meeting. I, it's my job at home to teach my children to behave. It's my job at home to teach my children values. And it's my job, and I don't expect any educator to bring their values into my child. Like, the same way I don't expect my child's behavior to represent anything but what I teach them at home. So if my kid comes into school and misbehaves, it's your job to then discipline. So I don't want anybody, any teacher at the district to think that I'm, I'm not for done disciplining the kids when they misbehave or like, you know, vice versa. If I'm not doing my job, then that goes on. You know, you're not going to teach my kid not to be a bully. You're not going to teach my kid to behave right. That's my job. So I, I do appreciate that you guys heard everybody at the last meeting and you guys really stepped up and did exactly what we have, which was, you know, to reduce the amount of incidents that we were seeing. So thank you.
Yeah, if I could just ask you guys a question. I know you said students recognize, you know, the dollars that they, they heard everything, recognize what they heard, understood what they heard. Anecdotally, are we seeing that difference in the hallways? Are we seeing that difference?
Well, I think the teacher presence in the hallway has been, I have to commend the teachers in my building. They've been really, really, really visible. You know, the guidance counselors and the deans as well. And I do want to highlight the security. I think that the addition has really been more active and we've been more present in the hallways. And I do think the students have noticed that. I think ultimately that we do have to focus on, on socio-emotional, we have a socio-emotional environment. I think we have to talk about culture and teachers. Teachers are doing that in their classrooms, so we're going to formalize that more and more.
Now, it was funny to walk the building and see students maybe doing something that would be disrespectful to somebody else or myself. Ms. Sand was there and we said, excuse me, and said, sorry, that's not the respectful takeaway from the, from the presentation. So, so they heard it and, you know, and they're real school way, it was cute, it was happening.
Yesterday, during the center meeting, the conversation of advisory groups and certain groups that allow students to have a platform. I know amongst all the different schools and districts, things were something a little different. So if you could only maybe like speak to that.
So you'll see in our upcoming plan, some suggestions here that relate directly to that.
Okay.
So what we're going to do for this part is really just go over the strategies of our next step because we could be here all night if we go through strategies, people, data collection. You guys have it, but we want to tell you what our next step strategies are, which includes some of the things that you were just speaking about, Ms. River.
So that's going to come up now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, right now.
All right.
So in our next step, what we did as a leadership team is the building administrators worked with their teacher leaders and their leadership teams in their building. And then we worked with them as central office to come up with short-term plans, which these would be our plans from now moving to the end of this school year. At our next meeting, we will provide you a long-term plan, which is beyond next school year and what are we doing moving forward? Okay, so you'll have three sets of plans. So in these plans, you're going to see a lot of commonalities here regarding the strategies. And the first strategy between both of these plans is to evaluate and make the necessary modifications of the hallway supervision. So we can't have our guidance counselors and our deans in the hallways every period because it kind of detracts from the ability for them to do their job well. So we're going to start reducing that and be putting people on a rotating basis and then evaluate if we are still effective in supervising our hallways and making sure that behavior is reduced. We're going to be developing systems with our school counselors about transition being back to school after a long-term or short-term suspension to ensure that we are decreasing repeat offenders so that when kids are on a suspension, they understand the reason for their suspension. When they come back, the guidance counselors will work with the principals on a tool that would set up a plan for reintegration to the school community in a positive way. We're going to be researching best practices in SEL that can be done as a small check-in, push-in model in each of our classes on top of ruler. So what type of things can we do in all of our classes and have accountability regarding doing that in our classrooms? We're looking to improve supervision in our cafeterias and supervision with cafeteria aides and additional security guards. They have worked with Joe Barline regarding evaluating specific posts, knowing what posts within their building are the most important to cover, depending on absenteeism or how many guards we have. But there is a recommendation that the high school is looking for six additional guards and the middle school is looking for two additional guards. So that would be a recommendation that we would need to look at in our budget when we come up because that's something they feel is important to increase visibility of security in the buildings. We talked again about faculty meetings and review of behavioral expectations and professional development and review of teacher hallway. That's common in both plans. In the high school plan, Dr. Klaup has before done these meetings of coffee talks. So maybe you want to explain a little bit about how you did those in the past and what they'll look like now?
Yeah, so coffee talks are really an opportunity for faculty to speak directly with me. Sometimes have some coffee and cookies. We've gotten away from that during COVID. But we're trying to go, we're trying to go back there. Just in the last three days, I think I've had three different meetings during the course of the day, not after school, but to highlight. For example, Ms. Mark Lewis, her new math teacher, she came to talk to me about advisory at different schools that she worked at as a model, which is something that I reviewed. I met with Mr. Fangler and Mr. Manzella today about small circles in their, in their classrooms where they just really talked about issues in the school, issues with masking, issues of isolation, how kids feel about school. So that's kind of the topic. Oftentimes I bring a conversation starter, like an article to those, and those are voluntary after school in lieu of extra help for, for the teachers.
Right, and I know that in the middle school, you developed the focus plan, right? Which is similar and it's, it's really the circle of your focus team. So why don't you share with the board?
Really just want to hear from the teachers, from their lens. Their lens is very different than mine. To hear really what is working, what is not working. The feedback that I get from our teaching staff is invaluable to really make the difference really for, not only for our kid, but for them structurally. So the kids continue to work with that. The teachers do like to be a part of it, they feel very heard. So it's been a nice way to incorporate them in the, you know, moving our building as possible.
So these plans continue with reinforcing behavioral expectations in classrooms through classes and continuing to focus on the expectations in our building, utilizing our resources, our SRO, as well as out meeting with Sheriff Tulon the week after vacation to see if there's any programs through the sheriff's department that we can bring in for our students. We are looking at, of course, continuing our ruler implementation and Mr. Aguirre working with his ruler team and ensuring that certain aspects of ruler are present in the school buildings. That is the same at the high school. School-wide assemblies program, so I believe that the middle school is looking at Ryan's story. And the high school is looking at a program called the Speak Live program. So they're going to be evaluating its appropriateness. Is it the right place in our high school? Is it a better place in our middle school? But evaluating programs out there that are SEL-minded and help students with social, emotional health and their literacy.
That is something that can be done in lieu of having the auditorium this year perhaps.
Right. And a lot of this SEL work and the push-ins and the ruler all include our SEL liaison. She's back at work now, she's integrated back into the building. She's been doing a lot of work in these places where you get more involved in the high school and make sure that she's a big part of helping research these resources, providing these quick check-ins for teachers that they can do in their classrooms. One of the things we speak about in the action plan as well is exploring the roles and responsibilities of school social workers as it relates to student behavior. So what type of groups are going on? And is there a need for more social, emotional help at either one of the buildings as it relates to social workers? We're adding full-time social workers in each of the elementary schools through our federal stimulus money. Right now, the high school and middle school, the high school and middle school have 1.5 social workers. So they each have a full-time and then they share another person.
Are we looking at that in our budget?
We did not yet because we haven't gotten to that in the budget. They are evaluating it. I'm sure that an additional social worker, whether we got two in each building, would be extremely beneficial during this time. So that would be something we would talk to at budget time.
It's only one in the high school.
1.5.
1.5.
Two psychologists in each building and 1.5 social workers. Do you guys want to highlight anything that I didn't go over generally in your plans at this time?
The only thing that Ms. River's brought up, working with Kate Vinnie about the advisory.
Right.
So she's going to research something that we can do building-wide. We would just adjust our bell schedule. But if you somewhere, students would have an opportunity in the morning for a certain period of time, doing SEL activity. And hopefully I'll be able to continue moving forward.
Are we open for the entire school body, all grades?
I'm sorry?
For the entire school body?
Yes.
I was talking psychologists.
We have two psychologists in each building and 1.5 social workers.
Are we wanting to increase the psychologists?
We're looking at social workers. So does the board have any questions? I know that this is a lot of information that you can digest between now and the next meeting. We wanted to give you the data from our first immediate action and then give you this second short-term plan, just as an overview that you then can review in writing, and then we can have feedback back as we move through this plan.
Any comments from board members?
Thank you very much. Because Dr. Klaup, I like coffee, cookies.
Come on over. We're the cookies.
Yeah, just, I do want to recommend you bringing in the staff, the teachers and stuff. You know, you guys know, I think you mentioned it, Dr. Aguirre. They're, they're on the front lines, they see a lot more than you see or we see right here. I think that'll be very important for that.
I agree, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you, guys. We missed challenge day. Do you like challenge day?
I like challenge day. That's my question.
All right, so this is public participation section. Against the Board of Education, opportunity to recognize residents who wish to raise a question and make a brief statement on an agenda item only. The time available will be limited to five minutes for each question. Please raise your hand. I'll ask you to come to the podium, state your name, and, oop, there you go. So first hand raise.
I'm Danielle Maldred. I just, again, wanted to say thank you since the last meeting when we spoke about the high school. It seemed like you listened. Within days, you have the police officers, the resource officers there. And I just thank you.
Thank you for your input at the meeting, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for noticing, some people don't.
Thank you very much. Next.
So my name is Farah Bellamro. I've been here before with you guys. My, the first thing I want to address is I want to see why in January, when a national county Supreme Court judge ruled that the mask mandate wasn't constitutional, North Federal and School District disregarded that decision.
I just want, I got to stop you there because that's on an agenda. I don't-
Mask mandates are on the agenda, I just looked at it.
They are. Yeah, on the agenda.
I just saw our emails.
Oh, sorry about that.
And yeah, because I could address you guys, I've sent messages to the clerk. I've gotten no response. I've sent Mr. Eschbach a multitude of messages, never got any response. So if I can't address it here, I can't send you guys emails, when do I get to address it?
You can send emails, you got a response back?
No, I've never gotten a response, never, not once.
Or would you have your name been on the, on the list?
On the register, yes, I contacted the clerk, I added my name.
Saying, has your name shown up on the agenda?
No.
Okay. Okay, yeah, so, so how, just so you know, our policy is when we receive an email to the district clerk, we can't respond to the board until, you know, we sort of meet. So the policy is that she sends back an email in receipt of your question or your email. And then either Glenn, which is the superintendent of administration, would answer that if they could, or we will have a discussion during the board meeting. So just, I just wanted to clarify that for you, why there sometimes is a delay.
Okay.
And I do appreciate it. Go ahead, go ahead.
So my whole thing is you want everybody to follow the rules, right? We decided in September, we passed the bill. We put it on the unelected governor for the mask mandate, the reopening. We said, we're going to wait for the governor, see what she does. So now when it was your turn to follow the rules, you decided not to do that. There was no stay issued for that day on January 25th. There was no stay issued. It wasn't issued until the, the school day was over. So North Babylon took it upon themselves to disregard a judge's ruling. Where have you guys got the authority to do that is what I want to know. And what kind of example does that set? Because I've been following the rules all year long. All year long, my daughter's been wearing her mask. Why was it okay for you guys to disregard that rule? I, I really would like to know that.
Great question. So again, we follow what is recommended by our council. We do have our council here and maybe Doug could speak to you.
That would be great.
Sure. So my name is Doug Spencer. I'm the district superintendent of 1-0. So when the Nassau County decision ruled that the mask mandate was unconstitutional, null, void, and so forth, it was within the district's discretion at that point, just as much as it's going to be in the district's discretion when the mask mandate eventually goes away, as to whether or not to implement a policy regarding whether masks are going to be required. So insofar as there was a determination at that time for the kids to wear masks, that's what the school did. So they, they continued to enforce the mask mandate. And that was up until the point where the state's granted, which was, I think, was about 16 hours later.
Right.
You know, and I mean, that's it.
Because the judge ruled it was unconstitutional. So the judge ruled that she didn't have the authority to make that. So the state wasn't in place yet. So how could that decision be disregarded? I don't understand that. Because there were plenty of districts that followed that.
Well, there's a distinct difference in what the, what the court ruled. The court ruled that the mandate issued by the state, like requiring masks in school buildings was unconstitutional. It didn't rule that masks were unconstitutional or that requiring masks was unconstitutional.
Right.
Only that the mandate issued by the state was.
Right.
So it didn't say that districts couldn't implement their own under their own policy.
But, and okay, I understand what you're saying. But the district sent an email saying that they were going to require the masks because there was going to be a stay issue. So you issued that mandate in anticipation of a stay that wasn't even done yet. That's what I don't understand.
So what the school district did is not unlike what a lot of school districts did do. In anticipation of, of a stay being granted, they, they want to put students in a position where they've been wearing masks for almost the last two years. And now we have one day off and then they're going back to wearing masks.
Right. Well, why are they going back to wear masks? An emergency doesn't last for two years. This is now a way of life. This has become a way of life for our kids.
I can't comment on that.
This is how we want this to work.
So I, I do want to let you know, thank you for, for this. We did get an explanation. We were advised, we did not meet. We went along with what we continue to go along with. I will let you know, we've had some discussions. And we planned to send a letter to the governor stating our case of how we feel. Mr. Myers has brought that, the intention of the board. We have had a discussion about that.
Excuse me, I don't mean to be rude. You're doing a little bit of doublespeak. I don't know.
One second, ma'am.
In one second, you're saying it's the school's responsibility? And then in the next, it's the governor's?
Yeah, so, okay, one second, you'll be allowed to come to the mic.
I'm just, yes, no, I'm just, I'm trying to understand.
No, it's, it's, it's fine. We, we all try and understand. So what, where we're at right now today is obviously the governor has said that she's going to make a decision after the break. So that's where we're at. We, I'll have one more day of school left. There will be a break. And we're going to move forward as we have followed the guidelines as we continue. So we have made a suggestion as how we feel. The Board of Education has also given direction to the superintendent of administration about if.
Well, how do you, tell us how you feel. That's what we want to know. This is what I expect in September. I want to know how you guys feel, but you, you.
This is a public comment. Who should not have admitted it?
It's not a problem, but you refuse to tell us how you feel. You did this in September. You passed the bill. I want to know how you feel. How you feel, how you feel, how you feel, how you feel.
Guys, I will ask you to leave if you're going to continue. I just want to let you know, we were all volunteers up here.
Right, absolutely.
If you're going to continue to talk to us that way, I will ask you.
Can I just ask?
I don't even know your name.
Can I just ask?
It's not on your time. You're on her time.
Okay.
So your time is up? Thank you very much.
I just, you, but my time is up, but you're not, I just want to know how you feel. Do you think the time has come for our kids to go back to normal? Do you think that time has come? Now, that, that's very, not that one. And again, what a wonderful.
Can I just ask, who makes the decision?
I need your name. Need your name and we could leave home.
This school district, man, they have no accountability. None.
Where does the decision come from? Because nobody seems to know who makes the decision.
Who down at the red?
At the end of the day, the governor makes it one minute, the school district makes it the next, the Board of Education makes it the next. So down to, are you ready to be asked? Down to, down to the, down to the basic, bare, like the lowest, where does the decision come from? Well, where does the decision come from? There's, there's no answer to this question.
Doug, you have to answer?
You guys sit up here all very high in lights and fail to realize that we have our children in this district. My daughter has had a headache. Where did you go? My kids had a headache multiple times for my parents. And now I get removed.
I need to motion.
Because nobody wants to answer the question. No, it's not because you failed. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight people have failed. Answer one question.
Ma'am, people have been arrested for playing back.
So if they can answer, okay, first of all, I'm a holy dog. We've spoken. Okay.
Going to make a motion.
No, I don't. I'm not. Would like an answer.
Second.
You know, because they're cowards. They're cowards.
So what is, what is your timer?
They're watching. They're watching. They're responsible. They're cowards. They passed the bill. This is what they do. And then they make us look like the crazy ones. I've been waiting for answers since September. Never once have I gotten one. For many of you, never.
I have done nothing wrong.
Well, I wonder why you got that. You have in the next two weeks. You guys are horrible. Well, it's the taking out of the will. Come and put that taken.
You're really going to win chair of the.
I'm just asking you to be nice.
Well, they are. Because they didn't like what they heard. They couldn't give a straight answer. So they'll leave.
You guys can't be proud of this. I'm not trying to.
Because they're cowards. They're absolute cowards.